Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel to gavel coverage of town and school board meetings, to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack New Hampshire Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.
Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, January 4th, 2021 Merrimack School Board Meeting. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remember to take your microphones off mute and rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Next up on the agenda is Public Participation Guidelines for the Remote Meeting. Because we are remote, we can't take live testimony. So if anyone wants to send any public comments, please send them in the following way. You may send an email to publiccomments@sa26.org. Again, that email address is publiccomments@sa26.org. We do require your name and address for the record on such documentation. Based on the amount of information we received tonight, our goal is always to read off verbatim the comments as we receive them. If the comments become too heavy in volume, we would just have to not read public comment into testimony. It's really an all or nothing proposition. Regardless, we will put all public comments in our minutes for tonight's meeting, but we would not be able to read them tonight if we can't read all of them. Up until just recently, that had never happened. It has only happened once to date. I'd just like to be sure to address it upfront in case we find ourselves in that position. Okay. Next on the agenda is Public Participation. Shannon, do we have any public participation that's come in?
There are no emails in the public in the publiccomment@sa26.org email box.
Okay, thank you. The item number four on the agenda is the Formal Hearing on Technology and Library Media Budget with Nancy Rose.
Hi, good evening. Thank you and Happy New Year to everybody. I can't believe that it's 2021. So I think I'll just do a really quick review of what I put in my budget letter, which was to say that the Merrimack School District Technology and Library Media Services continues its work of supporting teaching, learning, and the operational functions of the Merrimack School District. Many of the changes in the budget this year reflect the support of remote and hybrid learning that occurred during the 1920 and 2021 school years. We were able to leverage alternate funding to ensure a quick response to the provision of student and staff devices for home use as well as a range of instructional and curricular programs offered online. And the shift, while propelled by the pandemic, recognizes the ongoing change in the education landscape and the need to provide engaging learning opportunities that are universally designed at a personalized pace for every learner. This budget reflects an ongoing commitment to provide technology and software and library services that support that flexibility. I had some questions from several of the board members, and I was just going to go through those questions and responses and then see if there's any other questions from everybody. The first question comes from Vice Chair Barnes. And it is a question about my repair of instructional equipment account I have this question for not only this department, but all schools. So this has been covered in the elementary presentations as well, but my take is a little different. So the question is, if we've just purchased a number of devices, should we be budgeting more for instructional equipment repair, such as broken screens, lost or broken power cords? Students may also have equipment that has gone home. If it's not part of this account, where is it? And how will we account for more devices with repair needs? And then there was a, you mentioned that we purchased some refurbished devices, et cetera. And what percentage of devices are out of warranty? And so this question is also very similar to a question that was asked by Board Member Schneider and about just the use of this line. For the schools, this line is actually what is used for the maintenance of the copier and printing contracts that we get through a vendor that does all of that, including repair and toner. And then for the library and technology programs, this is also where we pay for the support of things like the laminators that are in all the schools as well as instructional technology in classrooms, such as projectors, AV equipment, and that kind of thing. So it doesn't really cover the cost of device repair. And so the question is, how will we be paying for that? Because we did purchase a lot of devices in order to support remote learning. And I just wanted to comment that the way that we do that is through our technical staff, the technicians. It's either material or equipment that's under warranty that then has to go through a troubleshooting and return process, or it's something that we reimage or power wash if it's a Chromebook. And if that doesn't fix it and it needs a hardware replacement, then they do that work. And then the materials that they use for that come out of my supply account. So it's a different account that covers the cost of the things that get used, but the actual work is done by district staff. And this also will reflect that we have asked for an additional tech support person in this budget. So that is the first question, and that is actually one of the questions that Board Member Schneider asked. Excuse me for one second. I've got lots of paper on my little desk. The next question is from Vice Chair Barnes, and it is about the Technology Infrastructure Improvement Account. With the additional devices in the in use and in the future classroom environment, I thought there would be a more aggressive ask for technology infrastructure to address the devices in place. Can you outline what this account addresses? And if it's a multi-year approach to get the upgrades made district-wide? Things like wireless access points and cabling seem mission critical based on what we procured in the last year. So what is important to note is, this year, we were able to use the state aid money that came in, as well as CARES Act funding, to pay for additional devices. We did buy those refurbished Chromebooks. We also got a set of Chromebooks in the spring, like right as we were going out to remote learning. Then we were also able to use some state aid money to replace all of the wireless access points throughout the district, which was a really big windfall for us. That work was done in December. And we were also able to use those funds to get cameras for the middle and high school classrooms. As well, we were able to use the funds for, excuse me, I should just take a quick look. Oh, we were able to do some wiring. So we did do some wiring for the additional access points, but we also did some replacement of the fiber runs that go between the network closets, which Matt probably knows. When those were put in, they far predate me. So they needed to be updated to new protocols and also new fibers. So we were able to use alternate funding to really build up the infrastructure to prepare for when we have students back. But we also have teachers in the buildings every day doing a lot of zooming right now. And then we also used some of the funds for accessing or for getting some Windows devices for kids in the high school who need a device for software-specific classes. And that infrastructure question was also a similar question, too, that was asked by Board Member Schneider and Hardy as well. And then one of the questions was, why is there a decrease in the infrastructure line? And so in the letter that was sent to you with the budget from the administration, I'll just quote what was put into that. And it says, "In light of the previously described effort to balance school district needs and community challenges, this budget does not include a request for funds to support the goal of achieving one-to-one computers for all district students." Excuse me. Instead, it is our recommendation to put this request as a warrant article for $450,000. So in the tech infrastructure account, there's a $20,000 replacement computer line for incidental replacements for staff or machines that live in the buildings to cover, you know, just replacements that are not specifically student devices. And then we're recommending that if we were to seek a one-to-one solution, that that be done as a warrant article. Let's see. Keep moving through my questions. Then there's another one about the repair account, and so I've already covered that one. There's another one from Board Member Schneider about other instructional media slash library. It's from the library account. It's 100-2222-36864907. Can you differentiate these non-print items from what's in the software slash licensing category? This budget is small, but was proportionally underspent in 2019, 2020. So an explanation of this account would be helpful. So this is stuff that really isn't books that would be part of the library program or library collection, and it's not software. It's like kits. We have been purchasing some STEM equipment. There's some different kinds of, they're like manipulatives that go with STEM activities, like Osmos or things like that. Robotics, look like small robotic kits and things like that. But this is also where we pay for the movie licensing that we purchase so that we can show, publicly show movies from like all of the major production houses, so that we're not violating fair use. So that's what that question was about. And another question from Schneider was about the infrastructure account. And then there was one from Board Member Hardy about the software line. And I don't have the account number in front of me. It's my 8650 line. And it is, I assume the increase for software and licensing is pandemic and remote learning related, and that's a correct assumption to a large degree. My software line kind of fluctuates based on multi-year renewals that are up as well as what we're covering new. So there's things in there, just so everybody knows. That line covers the library research databases. It covers some curricular software, the district website, the learning management system, as well as the infrastructure licensing, such as for wireless, all of our routers and switches, malware protection, all of those things in the background, our Microsoft license, things like that. And so it's a big line, but there's a lot in it. And we are budgeting to cover a lot of different software that we purchased using Title IV funds and some CARES Act money so that we can keep those programs going. They're really nice programs that are vetted by the different curricular areas and the different schools that they serve. So we were very fortunate to have the title funds to use for that. So that is what is the reflection of the software account. So those were all of my questions. I didn't know if anybody had other questions?
Yes, so before we get started with questions, Nancy, I'm wondering if you can just kind of summarize for us? Because first of all, I want to commend you and your team in what you've done during this pandemic. This has been no easy feat for you. And I know that you've been behind the scenes, and I think sometimes it's easy to take for granted all of the work that you have to do to keep this district running in such an extraordinary time. So thank you, thank you, thank you for that. But I also wondered if, there's a lot of things in the budget that we've had to add because of the pandemic. And I'm wondering if you could do just a very simple summary? I know you have to cover everything. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but certainly the things you know off the top of your head of what you've done, you know, since the pandemic began, and kind of where you see, you know, where as a district you need help from the board, kind of transitioning into next year, when the pandemic is certainly going to be around still. You know, there's a lot of talk as to when those vaccinations will really be in effect. And hopefully, you know, we'll be back in school, you know, full-time. But certainly, there's some agility, and there's certainly going to be a set of remote students. However, that set is, we don't know. But I'm wondering if you could just take a couple of minutes and just kind of walk us through that? And certainly, any way that we can help or any equipment that we can bring that might, you know, make our students better learners and as well as help our teachers in the instruction process?
And I'd just like to toss onto that how one-on-one plays to that? Because you mentioned, Nancy, about the potential warrant article to address the one-to-one ratio thing. Does the one-to-one ratio come to play as part of that? Because that was going to be my question. So if you roll them all together, I think that would be.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to kind of bring it because the budget just kind of makes everything so, you know, choppy. I mean, because it's, everything's a line item. And, you know, just to kind of put that story to what you've done and where, you know, you're trying to go and how we can help you.
Okay, yeah, I will do my best to do that. I think we're fortunate. Your question was really around the impacts on the budget. And as was noted, my infrastructure line is down. And that is because of the alternate funding that we were able to use from the title, the CARES, and the state aid money that we got. And so we leveraged that to quickly turn around improvements in infrastructure. So we literally have new wireless access points in every building in the district right now. They've all been replaced. And then in some cases, we added the middle school, because Shawna and Adam are here. When we were wiring that building, they were an early building that got a few access points, and they'd all been put in the hallways. And so we actually had to cable those into the classrooms to get the coverage better in the rooms. But otherwise, being able to do that in one fell swoop was massively helpful, as well as running the fiber runs, which improved the bandwidth for the entire building. So those were two big, big changes that are important. And we, you know, so going forward or thinking in the future, it may be that when we have more kids back in the buildings with more devices, our bandwidth may be a consideration. The good news there is that with our conversion to First Light in the last, I guess it's now our fifth year with First Light, we built out the fiber between the ferry schools and the high school, and then we built out the fiber to the middle school. And then this last year, we added a second internet pipe at the middle school. So that fiber build between the middle and high is connected, but they go out two different ways, which is critical because if one goes down, we still have service from the other. So one goes through Manchester that way, and the other one goes west and up into Canada. And the good thing about that is that we have redundant service, but we do it through one provider. So we've been fortunate to have that arrangement. And so if we need to increase our bandwidth, we're well positioned to do that without a lot of overhead costs. We can just essentially up the bandwidth. So I guess the infrastructure and, you know, bandwidth are considerations. The question about one-to-one, that $450,000 number was really a delta figure to get us from the devices that would be usable for the next several years that we currently have against what it is that we would need to purchase to get a device for every kid. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head that that was calculated from, but it was roughly calculating $330 a device. So it would likely be something like a Chromebook, but at the elementary, like the K-12 level or pre-K-12 level, we might consider an iPad, which we can get at that range, plus the licensing to go with that. And one-to-one, you know, there's a lot of talk about one device per kid, but what that does mean is a lot of support for teachers. So PD, training, not just on the use of the technology. Like that, I think, is probably more well in hand now because we've just gone through a trial by fire for the last nine months. The big thing that I am trying to help us work through now, and especially as we're working through our implementation of Canvas, is what's the difference between teaching in an online environment and instruction that leverages online settings, but that is wholly different than what they're doing? So we're trying to get them to think beyond replicating what they do in person to transforming how they deliver instruction? Because the opportunity here is for, you know, true UDL, Universal Design, personalization, self-paced instruction, the ability to be as independent as possible with that direct support in place. I've just started reading a book. It's actually sitting behind me. I'm not going to look back there because I can't honestly remember the name of it. But it's about when technology does not disrupt education. And it talks about technology can do a lot of things, but there's a quote in the beginning about, "If you put jetpacks on butterfly wings, that isn't a straight line of progression." That's like this. And that's kind of what we're experiencing now. And I think professional development and the capacity to provide it internally is huge. To get it externally is nice, but I find that there's a great deal of trust for the expertise that we have in-house. And then time, the time for people to work and collaborate with each other. Because the 11/2, the November 2nd day that we had for Canvas Learning, where we did a hybrid of live instruction, video-based instruction with collaboration time built in, was considered highly effective. And I think it's because there was something that matched everybody's need, but they also had that time to work. So I think that's a big area. I don't know what the board does to provide that. That's kind of not what we're doing here. But the time for teachers to do the work that helps them move from doing what they used to do online to transforming how they teach is not going to happen overnight, as we've seen. And then software is a big area. The budget does reflect an increase there. We have been able to invest in things using some funds that we didn't expect to have. And it would be a shame for those to go away because we've got some really nice programs that have been selected by our curricular experts. So things that support, I'm thinking of the ELA programs in the middle and high, where we have an online writing program called No Red Ink, an online literature program, actively learned, as well as, what's the other one? Nuzella, which is being used at the middle school. The programs that were very much based on in-person instruction in the elementary level through Pioneer Valley and Words Their Way, we were able to acquire the digital versions of those. So kids are still getting the programs that they were used to getting in the classroom. They're able to access those remotely. We were also able to license some library tools to give teachers more power over pulling together resources that they could leverage with students. So just a wide range of things that have allowed the remote learning to leverage a lot of really good resources. And then I think the last one is something that is in the budget, and that is the request for an additional technician position. As you know, we have a pretty small shop. The, I'm kind of glad that their question was asked about the repairs because they really are the people who keep everything running. And we hire some really, really talented people. They're able to just keep our technology running. And in response to the repair question, I talked to the network administrator about what's our current success rate on getting things up and running when they get turned in as broken or having problems? And I said, you know, if I were to just answer it, I would assume that our rate of return on just reimagining or power washing a Chromebook is about 80%. And then from there, if it requires a repair, we would need a part or something, or something might just be beyond repair. And he went and talked to the technicians and came back about an hour later. And he goes, "Yep, 80%." He didn't even prompt them with it. So we talked about the Pareto Principle, which is one of my favorites because it's true all the time. And having the technicians on the ground able to do the work is really the key to our being able to sustain what we're doing, both during the remote and hybrid environment, but also when we have students back relying heavily on devices. I don't see us going backwards in that way. So that extra technical support is going to be a huge one. Does that touch on all the areas?
No, thank you for just kind of pulling that together. I appreciate it. We'll open it up to questions now. I see Lori.
So I don't have a question. I just, I have a couple of things. So, you know, I totally support one-on-one technology. I think that there are some programs out there that, you know, for high school students maybe, that they could actually buy the device and then for years keep the device. I think that I definitely support the need for another technician. I was, you know, I know the turnaround time and how important it is when technology fails, that we need to get it up and running right away. I think that, again, you do an exceptional job, and you make it look easy, but I know you must be exhausted because you had a, you know, a huge job to do this year. And I think that you need that support because I do think that we're going to keep moving forward with technology. We're not going to go backwards. I think technology is the future. And so I appreciate your budget, and I appreciate all the work you've done. I do agree with the professional development has to be a key component of this. And, you know, it's maybe something we need to think about, you know, having summer workshops for teachers where we pay them or Saturday PD because it always comes down to the time. You know, because, you know, they teach all day. They still have their classes the next day. They have to prep, they have to correct. And so how can we figure out how to give them more time? Whether, you know, we negotiate two more professional development days into their contract so we can have those days as a district? Or, you know, we offer Saturdays or summertime? But thank you very much. Just comments.
Thanks, Lori.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to turn my camera and mic off, but I'll still be here as I always am in the background.
Okay, we're going on to then item number five, which is the Formal Hearing on the Maintenance Budget with Tom Tussell. Tom, welcome.
Hi, thank you very much. I'd like to start off my budget with just my message, which there is no significant items in my budget this year. As you go through, it's a pretty lean budget. And most items in my budget this year are all level funded at this point. So that's just a brief synopsis of everything. I would like to start if it would be okay to move into questions from, starting with Shannon Barnes, if that's okay with me? Okay. The first question from Shannon comes from a maintenance account. It's in the camera account on my book. It's on page four. And how many platforms are we maintaining due to technology advancement? I'm seeing DBIs versus cloud storage. Would it benefit us to upgrade and have just one platform for better quality cameras? And at this time, I can tell you, we are only using one platform, even though it did say DVR in there. We're all digital. As far as the way it works, we have an individual unit at each school. They all transmit data back to a single server that's located with Nancy in the IT department They all transmit data back to a single server that's located with Nancy in the I T department in a server closet. And at this time, we have not looked into cloud storage. We are focused on replacing old analog cameras with new I P cameras. So that kind of gives you a little lay of what that actually meant as far as V C I's because I know at one point. We used to see uh. Cameras with old V C I takes, but we are not using that platform at all.
Could, could I just talk a little bit about the cloud storage? Yeah, the uh, the, the reason why we're hosting this is i- it's much more efficient from our standpoint. Uh, we have a maintenance contract with all the servers with our provider. And there's another reason because of remote learning and everything like that. We really, really weren't in the position to push video into, into the cloud from a throughput and a. You know, kind of uh, bottleneck kind of uh, pace. But we are increasing our, our bandwidth. And our connections in all our closets and everything like that. So that would be something that we would look at in the future, uh, definitely. Even be more cost effective to do that as opposed to hosting the, the video on our own servers. But uh, you know, it was done specifically because at that point in time when we started off, we really didn't have the bandwidth. We didn't have. T one, we didn't have the connections we have now. And Nancy's redoing all the fiber between the closets. And then, you know, additional fiber runs and uh, increasing our speed. So we'll have the ability to look at cloud storage in, in the, in the future.
And the other point of that was also the depth of um, library you could keep when you have to store it on a, a finite uh, device. So you know, as, as more cameras are coming in and I know that we did add some with. The Department of Homeland Security audits that were done a couple of years ago and those kind of things. So we're, you know, and I know that we've been doing cameras for years. So you know, having those things updated so they're on the same platform. Similar quality so we can get good images, good coverage that I know we're not going to get into for all the right reasons because of the Department of Homeland Security. Uh, but with all of that, you know, are we doing as much as we can to have that depth of library if we have to go back? Um, if something comes up and we found out a couple of months ago, um, something may have happened and now we can't see the, the um. The data on that because we didn't have enough storage. Those are the things I was thinking about um, when uh, I was asking those questions. So. It sounds like we're going that direction and that there may be some cost-effective benefits as well as possibly some uh. Some content benefits, uh, depth of content benefits.
Tom, how, how far back do we go as far as retention?
Right now, we're, we could go back roughly three months in time.
That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next question from Shannon. It would be on page five of the book. And it's talking the difference between what is in. My budget versus what's in the I T budget as far as phones. Cause there is a line in there, it talks about phone lines. Uh, the big difference is the I T has the VoIP. Section of it and we do, we handle the pot section, which is the old-fashioned copper line, which is used for. Fire alarms in elevators. So that's the two differences. They're not overlapping, but there are two different areas that we cover.
And everybody knows what pot stands for, right? Can I say it?
Oh, television, plain old telephone service, sorry.
Thank you. There we go.
Okay, then the next question also from Shannon. Comes from the maintenance, um, maintenance uh, line item. One hundred dot, dot forty-six, dot sixty-two, eighty-four fifty-one, dot zero eight. It's on page seven of my book. What does it cover and how is the request budget zero? When we spent nine hundred and four thousand dollars in the last full budget? And that is a line item that just takes all, all our major expenses. Is far as what you would have saw in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, that totaled the nine hundred and four thousand. Would be stuff like Master Cola parking lot area, windows at Thornton's Ferry, windows at Reed's Ferry. Also, you would see in there um, transformer at the high school. In the boilers at Master Cola Elementary School. So that large item. That we normally significant expenses that just are not in this budget at all. Uh, you would see a line item for this year in the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Which would be in there as for chlorozins for high school replacements and relief valves for all the boilers district wide. And that went, that's why the last year or this year that we're into is at twenty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-six hours. So I hope that answers that question. Okay.
Think Lori has something here.
Okay.
Hey, so Tom, I just want to say um, again, thank you very much. I know that you had a. A lot of work to do this year. I think you're a great leader. You're a hard worker. You have great work ethic. And uh, you know, I really appreciate the cleanliness and the amount of work that we do. To our, all of our school buildings in Merrimack and uh, I really appreciated it when I was. You know, go traveling to other schools and uh, I, I noticed that they didn't, uh, they didn't look like Merrimack schools. And um, when I used to go into the planning and building committee meetings at the high school, like, you know, the floors were shining. Every bit of those schools and everyone was working the entire time. And I just really, that comes from your leadership and so I just want everyone to know that Merrimack is very grateful. That our schools are in such great shape and they're so clean.
Thank you.
Any other question? Go ahead, Tom. Back to you.
No, the uh, next uh, questions I'd like to go is from Andy Snyder. And he starts off, these questions come from page. One, eleven, twelve, and fourteen on my, for my book. It talks. In, in broadly about the utility expenses at Brentwood. The difference between. Expended and budgeted items, it significantly shows less expended than was budgeted and. The question is, how did we come up with this year's budget for it? And what we decided was basically we took. What we had last year, we level funded. It was another case, we've been pretty consistent through the entire budget of leveling fun. Level funding, everything. This is another item that we just level funded.
Yeah, when we, go ahead, Andy. I don't mean to cut you off, I was just gonna ask.
No, I'll, I'll be specific because the Brentwood building has been a bone of contention with very, various different committees. And the number that was always thrown out there is to keep the building alive was twenty-three thousand dollars a year, which fueled the. Discussions and planning and building and budget committee and stuff to tear the building down. It costs too much to keep it going and things like that. What your budget showed is the actual expenditure in the, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget was not. Twenty-three thousand, but rather close to seventy-eight hundred dollars. So probably about a third of what you had budgeted. Is what the actual cost is. And what I'm trying to really understand is. Forget the budgeted amount, is what we saw in the actual, something we can count on to occur. Ongoing, I mean, are the expenses for the different levels of utility truly more along the lines of what was spent versus what we budgeted? Because I think that data is going to be important for us as questions about Brentwood come up in other discussions later in the budget process.
Can I, can I handle this, Tom? All right. The twenty-three thousand dollars was given to the school district as a figure that they had historically. To keep that building operational when it was utilized.
This is from Suresk.
From, straight from Suresk. That's what we put in the budget, not knowing what the intent of the board was. Then we had discussions with the fire chief. Did a tour with the health inspector. You remember that, Tom? We were in there for a couple hours with John Manuel. And uh, you know, we learned we needed a new fire alarm panel. We needed, you know, sprinkler system upgrades, everything like that. So what you're seeing as far as the expenditure is a full year of what the building costs. For us and remember it's ten thousand square feet to maintain at a minimal level. So the pipes won't freeze or anything like that. So it's really, that's not the cost. Running where people would actually be in there. The only people who have been in that facility are the police department. Um, DEA, other organizations every so often for training. They don't mind that it's fifty-five degrees in there. So that's the cost to just have it exist.
Right, I mean, so that, it's seventy-eight hundred dollars ballpark. To keep on keeping on what we've been doing to allow the fire, the, the police and other resources to use the building for what they've been doing it for. Moving for, for as long as that building is there. Taking into account, it might fluctuate a little bit based on utility. Right, and things like that. But that's the scope and scale. That's the scope and scale.
But not knowing the intent of the board. Kind of, uh, I, we kind of batted this back and forth and I, I did primarily myself. You know, I wasn't sure of the intent of, of, of the board was. So we figured we'd keep the utilities there just in case. It was a different philosophy as to what we're going to do with that building. Would you want to go ahead and replace a fire alarm panel? You have twenty-three thousand. You know, so there, there's, it, it gives you an option. But if it's something where the board during these budget proceedings. Comes to the decision that they just want to maintain that building status quo. That twenty-three thousand can automatically be cut to eight thousand.
Well, I, I think just to be clear, I want to make sure from a budgeting perspective that we're clean. And that when we have these four line items to talk about the water sewer, L P, electrical and oil, which are the four. Items that Tom referred to before, um, that we don't bake into those what-if scenarios. Wha- what I want to make sure is what we're talking about with this four items is what it will take to keep that building alive. So we don't have to board it up. So it can be used the way it has over the last year and that's what I'm hearing. So it's not so much the budgeted amount. It's the fact of what it costs to keep that building going. And that's the important piece I want to take, take away from this, so.
Now, the answer to that would be a thousand dollars.
Okay. Thanks, that's my, that was, thanks for letting me deepen, get a little deeper into that one because I think it's an important point.
I'm, I'm glad you a- asked the question. I'm glad we clarified everything. So we know the intent of the board for next year is to just keep the building functioning at a marginal level.
It's information we're going to need because I know this topic's going to come up in other bodies in another month or so, so.
I want to get rid of the building.
Right, but it's a whole different story if it costs eight thousand dollars a year to keep alive versus twenty-four thousand.
That was a good point, Andy.
Yep, yep. I just wanted to make sure we had that data.
The petition warrant article that was done by Lee French last year had a certain amount to, to. Take the building down and we were going to couple it with the amount that we had in the operating budget to give the total amount to raise the building. Uh, that warrant article wasn't approved by the school board to take it down. It was approved by the budget committee to take it down. And it did, it uh, did not pass when it went to um, to a vote, so. Just a little history.
Let's move past Brentwood.
Please.
That could keep us here all night.
Yeah.
Next item does come from Andy Snyder again, the next question. It's. On page three and four and it talks about. In this upcoming budget, it does not see any crack filling or line repainting, restriping for the parking lot. Does this have any impact of not having students in attendance in the two thousand? Twenty-two and twenty-one year? It does not. Um, normally that's, those are line items that go in and out on need. Uh, at this time, we don't feel that we need any striping or crack filling. But that could certainly change depending on a master plan, which is. The entire high school, uh, front of the high school in that old area. So I would. Imagine we would see that on a regular basis, but it doesn't have to be in there every year. And at this time, uh, we've decided not to put anything.
Yeah, it's just, it's shown up like the last four or five years that I remember and this is the first year I didn't see it. So I was just curious if there was rationale behind it or not, but I'm good.
Good. Okay. The next uh, last question I have from Andy, as he says, it's not really a budget question. It's more of an update question. It has to do with the middle school at the drainage project that we did at the middle school. I can tell you that that project was completed over the summer. Um, so, so far we've experienced the fall. We've had a very dry fall, which. Works out okay. Um, we have had a couple periods of heavy rain. And we did not experience any plodding on the, on the grass surface up there at all. Um, so we're encouraged, but the true test of if it works or not really comes in the springtime. When we have the snow melt, water runoff from the village and stuff like that. So we're looking forward to it, but we. We see a couple positive signs at this point.
And just for people, for refresher, we, we budgeted what, seventy-five thousand last year to have that drainage work done? That was approved.
Eighty-two thousand?
It was some, some in that scope that was done to alleviate, it was like the, the first step. It had a lot of, a lot of airtime with the budget committee. About whether that money should be included in the budget and it ended up being included in the budget. And I just would like to make sure that we get an update for all involved as to whether that smaller approach. To alleviate the drainage has been successful. So, you know, it would be good sort of for administration when we get into the, the. The later spring, if we could share the observations about that. Cause I, I know we, there's nothing in there to talk about going to the next step this time, anything major, but I would be good to get an update uh, as we get a little bit further into the spring.
Yeah, we, we can, we can certainly, we can certainly do that. Um. That was a warrant article uh, for eighty-two thousand. No, that was my uh, master plan study. But yes, that was something that we discussed at the budget committee level and they were hopeful that uh, the solution would be the solution. And um, at that point in time, if it's not, we'll look at, we'll look at a phase two. But we'll, we'll have it designed off of the history that we gained by doing this phase one. So. This isn't money down the drain. This is uh, a good. Start to solve a problem that's been there for quite some time.
I, I think that the intent is not spent anymore if we don't have to, right? So that's the idea.
And at this point, that wraps up, I believe, all the questions that I have in front of me. Uh, there was another question from Jen in regards to, um. I think he asked a little bit about the turf field, but that's kind of off subject as far as the uh. Planning board and stuff, but uh, that's all, everything I have in front of me. So I guess it's opened up to any other questions that might be.
Okay, any other questions, Ford? All right. Well, I think we're good. Thank you so much for your time and for joining us this evening and we'll move on to item number six. Have a good night, Tom. Uh, formal hearing on the Merrimack Middle School budget. Adam Kerkar and Shana Demore.
So, good evening and uh, happy twenty twenty-one. Um, thank you very much for having us. We do appreciate the opportunity. To come and share information about our Merrimack Middle School twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school budget. Uh, this year's budget is a level funded budget and is built around our district's focus on personnel, technology, safety, maintenance. And providing the academic and social emotional supports for students. Uh, we realize that this past year has been a challenging one for our students, for our parents and our staff. And their collective efforts uh, have been just amazing in working through these different challenges that we have faced. While this budget is level funded, we believe it will provide for the various needs of our learners. In a fiscally responsible manner. Uh, we'd now like to take a moment to address the questions that we have been asked by the board in relation to the budget. I'll begin with uh, board member Schneider. Asked uh, kind of a, if you will, a multi-part question. So I'm going to do my best to answer each part individually. Um, so related to the expended line for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Uh, is less in most every case largely due to the switch to remote in the spring of twenty twenty, right? Uh, can you share how we are trending in the spending of these consumable items in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? School year, given the hybrid and remote model? So uh, our expenditures, um, you know, do definitely vary from line to line. Overall, we're approximately at uh, forty percent of what the supply budget has been budgeted for has been expended. Um, for this school year. Uh, the next uh, portion of the question, uh, do you see a long-term shift? In these sorts of consumable spending items moving forward? So these expenditures provide specific materials and supplies that are needed. In order to execute the different parts of the curriculum. So in the Merrimack School District, uh, we review our curriculum every eight to ten years as, as a cycle. Uh, at this time, it's during those curriculum reviews, instructional materials are also reviewed. So we always need, we always have need for printed consumable. Uh, printed consumable and technology in our curriculum purchases. The next question is, have we considered how to provide these consumables to remote students in the future? So we, we do uh, provide stu- supplies for our students who are remote currently. Um, for example, our tech ed in our classes supply the different necessary materials. For students to be able to work on the different projects and the activities related to that curriculum. Uh, we also provide printed materials, of course, for any students who uh, who are in need of those printed materials.
So just, so Adam, just to close on that one really quick. So I guess what I was trying to get at is that. S- some of the, like especially in, if you look at the expense during the, the last fiscal year that you, you have expense for. The numbers were down dramatically because there was a lot of time they weren't in school and, and you're trying to figure out what remote meant. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, do you believe that the costs of the consumables and, and expendable items? In a hybrid and a remote model will be back at the, at the previous levels that we spent before when things were normal because. And when we look at twenty-one, twenty-two, we don't know how it's going to be. we don't know how it's gonna be, we assume there's gonna be some sort of a blend. And is it appropriate to budget to the same levels we did before? And I think you explained it, because i- if kids are remote, they're still gonna have access to the materials, but I think it's, it's better to us to be really explicit about what we think the direction is gonna be for these sort of items, as kids are doing more things remote. I mean, will they take advantage of things that are more online versus what they'd have to do by hand? So, I mean, that was the point of my question.
Yeah, yeah, and it, are you, are, so is, is, is that, is that answers suffi- sufficient, I mean, I think it, uh...
See, I think it is, you clarified that. When their consumables are needed, you're finding a way to get them in people's hands, and you're gonna have those in them, whether they're remote or hybrid or in person, they're all gonna have access to those, so the level will be the same, so. I just wanted to put that in scope as to why I asked the question in the first place.
Brilliant, yeah, thank you, thank you. Board Member Barnes asked specifically about a field trip. She asked, is, is there only one field trip per class per year? The DC eighth grade trip notwithstanding, since it is not funded through the budget at all. So, yes, we do have two field trips, the first one is the seventh grade field trip, in which students participate, in which they go to Squam Lake. And then in eighth grade, we have a social studies field trip in which students go to the Lowell Mills. So those are the, those are the two field trips that are part of the overall middle school budget. You know, our, we're always looking for, as a middle school, we're always looking for opportunities for enrichment for our students. We feel that the expenditures that are included in the budget meet the needs of our students. But we, we do have different programming that does occur for our students after school, even in today's remote world, for enrichment as well, such as science olympiad, some art clubs, as well as our drama club. So, that was all that I had for, for questions from the board, and I'd like to entertain any other questions that you might have for us.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Actually, I just wanted to get a little more clarity, and I, in my question, I think that, you know, it, it dates back, so I know you're doing Squam Lake, which I think is just, I'm assuming a day trip, like a normal science day trip. But, you know, before, or maybe in, in addition to that, we used to have the YMCA program, which of course kind of got, you know, it did not, it only lasted a couple of years. But then before that was Camp Mytina, and that really did get a lot of, I feel like there was a lot of traction with families, you know, it's an experience that, you know, I think students before, I think my students were the first ones not to go to Mytina, so. Basically, those who'd be sophomores in college and back at this point, experienced something where it was an immersive, you know, away from home, you know, sleepaway type camp that had, you know, and I knew there were supervision issues as far as finding, finding people who could, you know, do the overnights, I think it was mainly the males that were the challenge. But, you know, that was something, you know, a great enrichment program, and I just, I didn't see that we were still doing anything of that sort. You know, so, so with that, I think it was a, a big one for those. I didn't know if there was still opportunity to explore something of that caliber, even back to Mytina, because, you know, things have changed, people can work more remotely, I think. There are a lot of flexible work environments possibly as well, from the private sector. I know that you have a lot to go through to vet those chaperones, but you, you do them for DC as well. So, with all of that, you know, it's just, that was something that I think, from, you know, at least from where my kids are on, that it was, it's something missing, and I think that it was, you know, definitely regarding, I saw kids still wearing those Mytina sweatshirts around town, from that trip.
Shawna, did you have?
I just wanted to say, that is such a good point, Shannon. And, you know, it was before my time, and I've heard stories about it from family. And the big point of like the Mytina and then the Camp Sergeant was about team building and the kids getting to know each other, and it, we did that in the fall, and what we were, what I noticed when we did the Camp Sergeant was the follow-up was kind of tough, and so then we implemented the advisory program in which we're doing that every single day, and every single staff member was trained in that to build the connections, and so while they're not getting the overnight opportunity, we're still kind of, you know, including all of those core principles of community and connection on a daily basis with the kids.
I, I do think, you know, one, Shannon, you are right, definitely was, was chaperone components to having challenges related to the Camp Mytina experience, but it also, there was a component of it where there was a financial burden that was increasing dramatically. I, I can, I, I wouldn't be able to tell you exactly the numbers right this moment, but I can definitely tell you that over the course of my time there, it went from being, you know, you know, eighty-nine, ninety, you know, under a hundred dollars to being well into a hundred dollars for students to be able to attend, and, and it was increasing exponentially on an annual basis, because, you know, that was definitely a factor, which really, in many ways, led to us looking at trying to do Camp Sergeant. And then, you know, with the feedback that we received related to the Camp Sergeant experience for kids, we ended up, you know, moving more towards just a Squam, Squam Lake, which is just a day-long science experience as opposed to something that was more comprehensive, so.
And Adam, if I recall correctly too, there was a big exclusion component, where there were students that weren't able to participate. And that, you know, just, that didn't really feel very good to us either, that some students just couldn't participate in, you know, just a team-building event like that.
And to be clear, Cindy, what you're talking about is because of the physical layout of the place, that's what you're referring to.
That's what I recall.
Right, no, that's right, I just wanted to clarify the term exclusion, it, it was that, right, because of the physical layout, some students, right, just couldn't physically access.
It didn't, for a variety of reasons, I think it, you know, it's hard for some students to be able to accommodate that kind of an, be able to participate in that kind of an experience due to their own constraints.
So if I could just build on, Shannon, you're, and I agree with Shawna, you know, and Adam, you're asking a really good question. And what, Adam, and I know that Shawna do always, is continue to evaluate, you know, what are possibilities, and, you know, I don't think that we shut the door on, on anything. And so, you know, and I am grateful, so, so I think that I'm speaking for them, but I, I know them well enough to know that that's, you know, what they do, do, and will continue to do, and, but I'm also grateful, Shawna, that you mentioned what you did, because when you, the birth of the advisory, you know, that, that's often a thing, like there are, there are good activities, but there are almost, some can lose their punch if there isn't good follow-through. And, and so what happened is that the, the connections and all, the whole purpose of an event like that is to build these connections, so I'm really grateful that Shawna just mentioned that, that that actually is a good outcome of what's happened that now sustains at the middle school. So, that's, that's just a true thing and worth mentioning, but, yeah, I'm, I'm sure that once we can clear away from the pandemic and look at options and, you know, what, what's available, I have no doubt that they'll continue to, you know, review. Sorry, John.
Yeah, John?
Thank you, I just wanted to add too, that Shawna, you know, I thank you for bringing that up, because what, what it also does is the advisory program is a direct connection to our second step program that we started all the way pre, pre K all the way through, up into the middle school, and now in the high school, we're seeing some work being done too this year. And I think that Shawna sits as part of the, the social emotional learning support team, so-called team, and as, as an active member there, and she's able to bring a lot that correlates with all those skills she talked about, being a good teammate and, and being a friend and, and, and controlling my own emotions, and how do I have executive functioning skills, and all those things that are essential to learning every day, I think is a nice, we're starting to see a nice correlation and flow all the way K through twelve in our district, it's really starting, and the, the efforts are, are, are happening, so. You know, where Camp Martina may have taught some of those skills in isolation, off-campus, we're teaching those daily now, and I think that I commend the middle school for the work they've done with their advisory, they've really taken it to the next level of the past year.
Okay. Shannon, were you finished?
That's all said, thanks.
Okay. Any, Jenna, I saw your hand up earlier.
Oh, I am, I'm off you. Well, two things, first of all, I had a comment before we got into this conversation, but having kids that have gone through the YMCA Camp Sergeant thing, and now kids that have gone through and are going through advisory, I have to say that, that, that I didn't realize that those two things were connected. I didn't realize that advisory was meant to sort of replace some of the experiences that those experiences were creating. But now it makes a lot of sense, because my kids would come home and, you know, you know, like kids do at eight o'clock on one night, say, I need mashed potatoes for tomorrow, or whatever. And I would be like, um, why do you need mashed potatoes for tomorrow? But they would have like this group dinner with their advisory, and I just thought, I didn't really ever fully understand it until tonight, I don't think, but now I'm realizing it's designed to create the community aspect, and we would laugh about it, and one time we had to make mashed potatoes twice, because apparently everybody liked mashed potatoes so much, but whatever. I'm realizing now that those two things go together to create that community, so that's really cool, and I'm glad that you guys are implementing that and working to continue to develop that into something, because mashed potatoes aside, I have seen other real benefits to my own kids with that, and probably, you know, I would imagine with other kids as well. So that's really great, and I, I really appreciate that as a parent. But I also just wanted to, as a, as the only school member with a middle school student, I just wanted to thank Shawna and Adam so much for the community they create and the hard work that they put into creating that community. My kids and I know their friends have had such great experiences, and, you know, unfortunately, my, you know, my kids probably won't get to, my, I have one that didn't go on the DC trip and one that probably won't get to, but, but you guys just do a great job, I appreciate it, as I look through the budget, how you, you do it on, you know, very fiscally conservatively, and you spend what you need to spend, but you do a great job with the money that you are given, and I just want to say as a parent how much I appreciate that, and it's not unnoticed. Thank you so much, that, that means a lot, thank you.
Are you, are you finished, Jenna?
Yeah.
Lori, did I see your hand up?
No, I will, I will just add two cents, so again, going back to what Mark said about advisories and, you know, all the research shows that like the one-shot deal things are not, you know, long-term learning, and so having the, the advisory, having those goals, and then, you know, when the pandemic's over, looking for other extended opportunities for kids, I, I, I love it, I, I'm in favor of advisories, I'd love to see the high school move towards out of the home room system into an advisory, because I think that all of those connections, th- those are the things that kids really remember, the connections, and that's what the advisories build, so, so thank you for that. Great budget presentation, again, level-funded, I think that, you know, like, listen, you know, carefully to the taxpayers' concerns, and, you know, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? I just had one, it's simple, it's just, I just want to ensure that we have enough materials, like textbooks and to accommodate all of our students, and that, that's accounted for in the budget, so I just wanted a confirmation of that.
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
Right.
Other questions?
I just...
Oh, go ahead, Lori.
Cindy, so I think this might be a district question, but I will ask it to the middle school, so. One of my, my questions would be, so next summer, when we're thinking about summer school, and we're looking at the number of students that are probably going to need summer remedial work, or, you know, extra time, is there enough, I don't know, i- is there enough money in the budget to meet all kids' needs, to give all kids a chance to have some one-on-one instruction in math or literacy, or, you know, where that, you know, they really struggled this year? You know, can we offer something just a little bit more than we have in the past, and, and where people's thoughts on that?
Mark, did you want to take that one?
Yep, I, I, yes, I would also just see if John has something to share on that. And then we'll definitely have more to talk about that tomorrow night with Heather Barker, but, but yes, John, I just want to defer to you.
Yeah, that is a district question, and that falls within our district budget, the funding for our eight-point-five program, which is, and our, you know, our high school summer school to meet those kids, we've talked at length, Adam and I and Shawna, about really our, our population coming into the middle school too, that you'll see some conversations happening again this year about that. You know, Heather extensively has expanded her, her offering through E S Y, you know, we've done that, that work. It will continue, I think that we have the structural program set up. We offer to a lot of kids, and Title One, we offered to a lot of kids last year too. We have more difficulty with participation at the middle school, I'll just say that, and I think that Adam and Shawna will nod to that. It's a place where we offer, 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 and I'll offer right now publicly that we will provide programming, people need to come and show up, and that's what I, that's what, what I can say on that one. It's, Lori, it's not, it's not a, a question of needs and means and, and budgeting, it's a question of participation, and that's where we are with that.
And more tomorrow, even, again.
All right, well, I think we're all set then with the middle school, thank you, Adam and Shawna, Happy New Year, and thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you all, have a good night.
All right, so we're on to item number seven, it's the second review of the new policy, and I'll turn it back over to Dr. McGlaughlin.
Okay, so, so just as a recap to anybody who might be listening tonight and didn't the other night, so, or, I mean, the last meeting, so we have our district's nondiscrimination policy, which the board approved some time ago, and that policy that the board approved contains a variety of other policy references that we wanted to bring before the board to, to make sure that they were either updated in cases where they were old and just needed to be updated, or where we didn't have one, and we needed to have it in place, so that the whole nondiscrimination policy and all its subparts were approved by the board and operational. So, at the, meeting on the twenty-first of December, we had our first reading of the commitment to religious neutrality, and then tonight is just a second review of that and an opportunity for the board to ask any questions or clarifications, and, and if there are some, we'll take them under advisement and bring them back, the answers back to you next time. If there are none, my expectation is that it would be on the consent agenda on the meeting on January nineteenth, so, really, I, I just will take any feedback that the board has on that particular policy, if any.
Any feedback on the policy? Any comments, Lori?
I just have a question, so, when a person gets hired in the Merrimack School District, and they're getting trained, is this part of the training? You know, like, there's just so many policies, but it's, it's all seems so important, so, are they directed, like, these are the policies that you need to read, I, I'm just curious how that...
Yeah, no, it's an excellent question. I, I can tell you, well, I'm, I'm reluctant to s- I'll tell you what I think I know, and, but that might be contradicted by our HR staff, who would definitely know more about that.
Then just hold, we'll just, we can discuss it tomorrow, so we'll be...
Oh, okay, 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 I could, yes, I can follow up on that, and just make sure that my answer is accurate. I'll do that.
Okay, anything else on the policy? Okay, we're moving on then to item number eight, which is the approval of the December twenty-first, twenty-twenty minutes. Do I have a motion? Made by Andy, second by Shannon? Any comments, edits? Lori?
No, we're in, all in favor.
All good? All right. Shannon? No? Okay, we'll go ahead and take the motion then? Okay. All those in favor of the, the December twenty-first minutes, please show your approval by raising your hand, saying aye. Aye. And nay, and then abstain, which is me, so the motion carries for zero-one. On to the next item, which is definitely in our housekeeping portion of the agenda, which is the consent and ju- consent... Onto the next item, which is, um, definitely in our housekeeping, a portion of the agenda, which is the consent and ju- consent agenda by John Purbizio.
Thank you, I only have one resignation tonight, and that is by Kara Kay, if our district-wide preschool coordinator. I have no nominations at this time.
Okay, do I have a motion? Andy? And?
The window's open, I move that we accept the consent agenda as read.
Alright, nice, I saw a second, oh, second by Shannon? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Opposed, none, the motion carries five zero zero. Now we are on to other, the first item on other is correspondence. Um, I have just a couple. Um, we, some, um, we received at least, uh, one, and I've had a couple more regarding an update on the plans for return to hybrid. Um, and it's my understanding that we are still on track and targeting, um, to return back on the nineteenth. So I just wanted to publicly have, uh, Dr. McLaughlin confirm that.
Uh, that is definitely the goal.
Okay, would you mind sending just an email, happy new year, you know, to our parent population and explaining that that's still our goal? And that's what we're working towards, you know, of course, there's the disclaimer that should something come up COVID-related that we have no control over, then. You know, we would have additional correspondence, but I think, um, some families are just waiting for an update, and it might be helpful to just let them know that that's how we're trying to track.
Will do.
Thank you very much, and then we also did receive an email from, on the, about the town deliberative session. And election thoughts from Lynn Christensen, so I know that we'll have some conversations about that in the future as far as, um, you know, how that. Process will work and how the deliberative session certainly not an easy, um, situation, and will be challenging. Um, and then I did get an email regarding, uh, from a parent regarding the travel policy and some concern. Regarding limitations, limiting students that are trying to visit colleges, so I just wanna go back and look at that policy. Cause it was our intent, was my understanding, that we would try to make, that we wanted to make sure that that policy really matched state requirements. Um, so I will go ahead and kinda dig in a little bit more and then get back to that parent regarding their concern.
Yeah, there was, I was gonna say, I'm, I'm pretty sure that we put that link to the state working employment piece to make sure that any cat. Things there, but I'll, I'll look the same way you will, make sure that the flow's right.
Yeah, that was our intent, that was our intent to make it match, so for some reason, there is a contradiction, then I will bring that forward in a future meeting. Um, so that we can rectify that. Dr. McLaughlin?
Uh, so, I'll just, I, I'll just say, uh, this, that I believe. Uh, that the state, uh, has recently changed their policy on that. Uh, and they have shortened the time, uh, for travel, and so our policy. You know, these things are changing all the time, and our policy has not been updated to reflect that. So I'll just, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll just say now that, um. And I'm sure, and people have shared with me their disagreement on a number of matters on this, but I will just say again. There were almost two thousand cases in the state of New Hampshire. Uh, a few days ago, day, one day. And, and, um. You know, thirty-five new cases were reported in Merrimack from Saturday to Sunday, I think. Back in the spring, we didn't have thirty-five cases in New Hampshire at one point. Uh, so, um, I am reluctant, just personally, to support a change. That, um, that in any way reduces the standards that we have applied. I'll do obviously anything, I'm just saying that on that particular issue, I have a child who's a senior and, you know, our life is turned upside down as a result. But, you know, I, I just think that, uh, in every future deliberation, that we need to really bear in mind. That we are, it's a crisis right now, just that, so that's all I'll say, so when you do your research, you'll see that the state has changed. And, uh, we, our policy does not reflect that change, and if that's the board's will, we'll of course do it, but that's, that was a, a, back in, I think. Early December, that change.
Okay, so we'll likely bring that on a future agenda.
Correct.
So that we can, um, you know, make sure that we're, um, consistent with what the board's will is on this particular item. But thank you for that, a piece of information and your feedback, um, but that's what I had, I know, as it relates to correspondence, any other correspondence out there? Lori?
So I had the, um, email from Dr. Dawn Brought. She works in another school district, and her question would be, would the board be open to forming a committee of. Parents and students for input in opening the schools. She said she has COVID-nineteen awareness and works at a neighboring school district that is in person. And, um, she wants to be part of the solution, but she also wants our school district to be open.
Okay, any other comments? I, I mean, any other correspondence? Okay, moving on to comments, any comments? And, uh, John Purbizio?
Thank you, it's a little common and inf- infomercial here, uh, today on our district website and out in Facebook, I put out to all of our parents. That, um, parents as instructional partners, that we have, we have a district have, um, um, bought a license. With demonstrated success to provide, uh, learning opportunities for our families and our parents for, um, several topics to do with remote. Education, and there'll be two workshops offered, uh, per month for the next four months. So you can find that information right on our website, and it's called Parents as Instructional Partners, thank you.
Okay, thanks, any other comments? How about new business, item number eleven, any new business to discuss? None, any committee reports? Any committee, probably not many over the holidays, so, um, no committee reports, and then how about Shannon, do we have any public comments on our agenda items?
Going back into that mailbox, I do not see any have come through at all tonight.
Okay, alright, so then we will move on to, um, I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public session. For RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, comma, Roman numeral number two, A, B, and C.
So moved.
Made by Andy, or Shannon, and then second by Andy. Um, Andy, how do you vote?
Favor.
Lori?
In favor.
Shannon?
In favor.
And Jenna?
In favor.
And I vote in favor as well, so, um, we will now go into non-public session, that motion carry five zero zero. Thank you, and, um, to the board, you should have an email in your email box.
Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel-to-gavel coverage of town and school board meetings, to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Uh, good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett, I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack New Hampshire Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected, follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.